Okay, good evening, everybody. Today is Wednesday, August tenth. Time is six thirty P M. And I am calling this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Prestige to order. You will now say the pledge.
Fudge allegiance.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God. And if there's a law, let's live in the end of this world.
It's cozy. We please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, trustee Cusmano.
Here.
Trustee Lucido.
Here.
Trustee Oliver.
Yeah.
Trustee Nevers.
Present.
Supervisor Gillette. Absent. Clerk Posey here. Supervisor Viviano.
Here. All right, moving on to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I have a proposed add-on for thirteen A to request to approve the promotion of Ed Carey from election coordinator to election supervisor. That's all I have.
Motion to approve the agenda as corrected.
Second.
I wasn't making a motion. I was asking for a motion.
I'm making a motion. I'll second it.
My mistake. I wasn't clear. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Motion by trustee Cusmano. By trustee Oliver to approve the amended agenda. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item three, approval of the bills. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Court.
There any discussion on the bill run? Hearing none. Motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Nevers to approve the bills. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, moving on to item four, approval of the previous meeting's minutes from July twenty seventh.
Move to approve. Let's see, Cusmano seconds.
Any discussion? Motion by clerk Posey, supported by trustee Cusmano to approve the previous meeting's minutes. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, now moving on to the consent. I'm sorry, moving on to public comment. At this time, if anybody wishes to make public comment, this is for agenda items only. Please make your way to the microphone on the right-hand side of the room. If there's anyone participate participating remotely. Uh, please digitally raise your hand. You will be called upon. Please state your name and address for the record, and please remember there's a three-minute time limit. Thank you.
Jason Harding, twenty-four five fifty Pebble Beach Lane. I'm here to express my displeasure with the board's decision. To allow saw cutting concrete during noise restriction ordinance hours from the last meeting. Uh, I live and work at a home, uh, from home in a permanent construction zone. And the only relief I get is during these hours. Uh, the ordinance is constantly being violated, and police have been called numerous times. By multiple residents, not just me, and only warnings have been given. Uh, the purpose of this ordinance is to protect taxpayers from this nuisance and allow for the quiet enjoyment of our property. Yet you allowed this to be violated up to ten P M. With concrete saws. I hope this never happens again.
Thank you for comments. Anyone else present wish to make a public comment?
Uh, Neil Caffenberger, four, six, six, eight, four, Fox Run Drive. Um, I'm here on, uh, agenda item number twenty of. Called. The encroachment for the two residents over on Peach Grove. You happen to remember back in twenty eighteen, summer twenty eighteen, the people of Fox Run. Subdivision on Fox Run Drive that lived up against township's property. Were forced to remove gardens, statues, fences. And sheds. We were forced to move them. My personal opinion is we were forced because we were opposing them putting in a dog park. Basically, they came to our side of the sub, and they attacked us with all the stuff. We all applied. We all moved all our stuff. So we had nothing on township property. Now, to allow them to continue, before I believe they had permits before, but now it looks like it's up for renew. You know what? It's time for them to get off of township property, just like we were forced. Because we used to cut the grass, trim the drawn trees, made it all look nice and everything. But, you know, that wasn't good enough. Ms. Posey, I'm sure you remember. Ms. Nevers, you should remember all this. And I don't think the encroachment should be approved. Because, like I said, we were forced off socially. So should they. Thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? Any participating remotely wish to participate? Hey, I'm going to close public comment. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Motion.
And to approve the consent agenda in its entirety.
Court.
Discussion on the consent items. Hearing none. Motion by clerk Posey, supported by trustee Lucido. Approve the consent agenda. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. So now we're going to move on to item seven, which is a public hearing. And it will also be a resolution. So first, we're going to hold the public hearing. Um, and I will open the floor in a moment. Mr. Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, board members. Uh, before you have a request from Allied Photochemical. For a industrial facilities tax exemption, uh, for the maximum that the township has, uh, passed to be allowed, which is nine years. There is an industrial development district that has been created for this, uh, which we did, I believe, in March. And this is just for the addition that is being added on to the building. Uh, it went up for review. There were no objections to the request. I am available to answer any questions should you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. So at this time, I am going to open the public hearing on this I F T. Time is six thirty-seven P M. If there is anyone who wish to make comment on the, on the resolution to grant this I F T, you make your way to the. Microphone on the right-hand side of the room, or raise your hand digitally. Don't see anybody present who wishes to make public comment. Roger, anyone?
No, sir.
Okay. So at this time, if there is no comment in the public hearing, I will close the public hearing. The time is still six thirty-seven P M. So with that, is there a motion to approve the resolution granting the industrial facilities tax exemption tax abatement Allied Photochemical?
So moved.
Is there a discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, in review of this motion, or this motion, um. I found a typographical error in paragraph two of. Resolution. Second paragraph, second line reads, after a great team, R A T I N G, this certificate. I believe it should be granting certificate. Uh, would I present that to minimum clerk? Correction.
Thank you.
I have no other comments regarding the matter.
Do you need to?
No.
All right, if there's no more discussion. Motion by trustee Nevers, supported by trustee Lucido to approve the resolution granting the industrial facilities tax. Abatement for Allied Photochemical. Clerk Posey, we call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Trustee Lucido.
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano.
Yes.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano.
Yes. That resolution is adopted.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Moving on to item eight, we have a request to adopt a resolution ordering the adjustment of the street lighting district assessments. There are motion.
So moved.
Second.
Grant that one.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members. As the board's aware, uh, special assessment districts, uh, for street lightings are set up for each of the individual subdivisions. Um, these are, uh, the district is set up, uh, in contract with D T E to actually install the lights. They give us the annual lamp charge. Um, the S A D says that it's supposed to be adjusted according to what the township is being charged. However, over the years, the township has never made any adjustments, special assessment district. So. Essentially, a subdivision that was constructed twenty years ago is being charged the same rate that they were twenty years ago for the lights, even though. D T E has adjusted the rates up for the most part over the years. So, um, in order for us to make the adjustments, we've had to do a complete audit of all the streetlights within the township's system. Uh, that is necessary because D T E only gives us a bill for the lights. They don't break it down by subdivision. So we had to go in and figure out what lights were in, what subdivision. Um, what types of lights they were, how many heads were on the light. So it was a very complicated thing. Uh, Crystal Kozak in engineering spent a whole lot of time in the last couple of years trying to figure all this out. They worked with D T E and, and treasury, um, trying to figure out, figure this all out. So we have a gigantic spreadsheet that we now can. Uh, as D T E makes adjustments, we can adjust accordingly. Uh, it'll be something that we'll review every year. Uh, and make sure that D T E had either hasn't made adjustments, or if they've made adjustments, we'll be able to bring that to the board so the board can, can approve it. Uh, we worked with the township attorney to draft the appropriate resolution so that we can. Effectively change all of the special assessment districts throughout the township in one, in one resolution. Attach the resolution that's in the board packet. It is an exhibit that shows all of the individual subdivisions that have special assessment districts. Uh, what the original, uh, land, annual lamp charge has been. Uh, to this point, and what we're proposing to adjust it to. You look at the individual, uh, subdivisions, some have gone up and, but a few have gone down. Uh, and that has to do with some of the, uh, Public Service Commission, uh, in D T E working together the last few years. With regard to L E D lights, especially, some of those charges have actually gone down. Uh, but then they've held their charges, uh, due to COVID and, and other things economy recently. So. Uh, anyway, the, the, we're recommending approval. The, uh, township should be reviewing this every year, like I said, and so this will be something that will be regularly brought to the board as we see changes in, in. We think that changes need to be made. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Mandeville. Any questions or discussion?
I got a few. Go ahead. No, go ahead. After you, trustees. Just, um. I, looking through, I see where you said some are higher, some are lower. Do you have a bottom line number of we've been subsidizing or?
Yeah, over the years, that, that number has changed. At one point, it was upwards of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, I, I think it's down to about forty thousand if you take the township lights out of the. Jennifer, um, one, one other thing we're probably going to be doing here in the future is looking at the lights that the township specifically pays for. You remember, we put a bunch of lights on Heightenreich and Twenty-One Mile, for example. Um, we want to look at all those lights to make sure that we have the most energy efficient lights. So those, that, that'll be something that we'll bring to the board, um, later on.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Lucido. Trustee Cusmano?
Oh, yes, I, I did a little analysis for my own subdivision, Ultimate Farms, Ultimate Farm Space Two. It's going up from eighty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents to eighty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. Which comes out to be a four percent increase. In other words, it's. Three dollars and twenty-seven cents more per home per year. Does that sound?
Yeah, the, the, in, in, these vary depending on when the lights were installed and what lights were, were in the development. Uh, at, at the time, the older the subdivision, more than likely the larger the increase, just because a subdivision that's been there for thirty years has seen. An increase over the years, a lot more than a subdivision that might be there for ten years. And my, my subdivision, for example, has gone up, I think, eighteen percent. So it just depends on what, when the sub was built.
And if any residents are curious about. The difference between the high-pressure sodium lights and the L E D lights. He had a meeting with the representative from D T E Energy via Zoom. Do you recall that meeting?
Yes.
And, um. It's a distribution charge per lamp. And as, in response to the inquiry about changing out the lights to more efficient L E D lights. You tell the residents what. Basically, we were told.
Yeah, it, a lot of the fee that the, the subdivision see in, in, and then annual lamp charge. Has to do with the maintenance of, of the light, not necessarily the energy. So the savings. We, we can certainly look at that as the prices of high-pressure sodium versus the L E D goes up and down. Um, you know, right now might be a good time for us to, to look at that. But up until recently, it really, the payback is, has been long on the conversion.
And my recollection of the meeting was is that they basically told us that you're stuck with whatever you have. And that it's a, there's a per lamp charge, and it's a distribution fee, not so much as an energy fee. And that they've been moving in that direction.
Yeah, yeah, right. Part, part of the, the conversion, because there's a cost to the conversion itself. So you have to look at. What it costs to actually make the conversion, and then what you're, are you going to save every year, and how long is it going to take for you to pay that back? And, and, yeah, in some cases, it, it, it might not make sense.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Cusmano.
Just a quick question. So, so, but some of the older lights, if they just totally fail, are they just automatically replaced with an L E D?
We've, for the most part, no, because, you know, you don't want to necessarily stick a different style lamp.
Excellent.
In, in a, uh, an older subdivision. We've had some specialized lights that we have decided to retire and, and put in our standard acorn style light. And in that case, yeah, it would be converted to, to L E D.
Okay. But generally, you wouldn't stick an L E D in the middle of five sodiums.
The, the, yeah, the, the light itself is going to look totally different. Uh, high-pressure sodium has more of a yellow tint to it, whereas the L E D is more of a bright white look.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Oliver. There's no more discussion. Motion by trustee Oliver, supported by. Posey. Uh, to adapt the resolution ordering an adjustment of the street lighting district assessments. Clerk Posey, we call the roll.
Mr. Chairman, trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Cusmano.
Yes.
Trustee Lucido.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano.
Yes. Resolution is adopted. Moving on to item nine, is a request to accept the formal S A D petition Vintage Lane Road replacement. S A D number M A one oh five dash P, and to adopt the resolution number one. Motion. So moved.
Court.
She ran telephone.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members. Um, this is essentially the second phase of the Chelsea Park subdivision, uh, road replacement project. We had to break it out into two different projects in order to maximize the amount of money that we received from the county. Um, the subdivision, Homers Association Group, uh, went and obtained all the signatures that they could for Vintage Lane. Um, within subdivision, uh, the. Signature has been verified. It looks like we've got north of eighty percent, um, that want the project to move forward. So we are very comfortable, uh, with recommending that we adopt resolution number one to the board. Uh, this will allow us to apply, uh, with the county, uh, for the, the fifty percent funding up to the half million dollars. And then it'll be up to the county to evaluate all the, uh, requests that they get in, in a audit sometime later this year. So if everything goes according to plan. We would be under construction next year, uh, on this road, like we will be for the first phase of this development, uh, this, this coming October, I believe. Recommending approval, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Van Teefel. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Nevers. To, uh, accept the. S A D district petition for Vintage Lane Road. And to adopt resolution number one. All the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Lucido.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano.
Yes.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano.
Yes. That resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Van Teefel. Moving on to item ten, is a request to approve the purchase umbrellas from S T M Industries for the picnic tables at Waldenberg Park. There are motion.
Trustee Cusmano only promotion.
Oh, it's important. Who's got this part?
Our.
Oh, that's thank you, Mr. Chairman. You, you board members. Park and Recreation Department is requesting permission to purchase umbrellas for the new picnic tables at Waldenberg Park Circle. We received three quotes ranging from twelve thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents to fourteen thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. Sixty-five cents. This time, we are recommending we purchase the umbrellas from S T M Industries for a price of twelve thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars, fifty cents. This includes six umbrellas and shipping. I've included the quotes, the confirmation of process memo, and the purchasing specialist. This is a budgeted item, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeCaro. Any questions or discussion?
I got a question.
Sure.
So are them, them are a seasonal umbrella that will. Disconnect, take down. So. When will we put them up?
Well, we're waiting for the tables to come in.
We're not, yeah, we're up and running.
Right, yeah.
So the, when we start a new season.
Oh, yeah, no, they'll be ready. Yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully, this year, we're hoping.
Okay, we already have them up this year. Good.
We're hoping to, yes.
And take them down for the winter.
Correct.
Yep.
At the tables.
Tables will stay.
Tables will stay.
I get out. I didn't mean to trip you up, but.
Clothless.
Correct.
Fiber glass. They're fiberglass, sorry.
That's correct.
So they're, uh. They don't open and close. They just stay open.
Right, but all that stuff. Uh, it, it, it suffers so much during winter. The fiberglass expands and stretches, and where it's seen.
Cracks.
It'll crack. Winter beach thing. Thank you. Chairman, I have. Dollars for six umbrellas means. Am I to understand the shipping cost is over six hundred dollars per?
Correct. That is correct.
And that's consistent with the size of these.
Yes.
Reassembled.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, trustee Cusmano. Any other questions or discussion? Hang on, trust, uh, motion by trustee Cusmano, supported by trustee Oliver. To approve the purchase of umbrellas from S T M Industries for picnic tables at Waldenberg Park. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item eleven, is a request to approve the purchase of cardio equipment from Matrix and All Pro Exercise Fitness Things. There are motion.
And to approve.
Support.
Yeah.
Mr. Carroll. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Park and Recreation Department is requesting permission to purchase cardio equipment for the recreation center. If approved, this purchase will complete the process, replacing the cardio equipment that began in June. At this time, we're recommending we purchase eight pieces of equipment from Matrix. For a cost of thirty-three thousand, ninety-eight dollars. And nine pieces of octane equipment from All Pro Exercise slash Fitness Things. For a total, for a cost of fifty thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars for a total cost of eighty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars. Both Matrix and All Pro Exercise Fitness Things are sole source providers. Their equipment. I've included the quotes, the confirmation of process memo from the purchasing specialist. This is a budgeted item, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeCaro. Questions or discussion?
Chairman, if I may, can you just give a general idea of what the cardio equipment includes?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
An idea of what the cardio equipment includes. Is it treadmills?
Yeah, so, yeah, I have the list right. I've included the list for you. Um. The Matrix is all treadmills. Octane is some ellipticals, a couple of bikes. So replacing, so we used to lease our equipment, now purchase them, and then we, they have a buyback to it. So. We do that every three years.
That's my next question. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Any other questions? We have a motion by clerk Posey, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the purchase of cardio equipment. Matrix and All Pro Exercise Fitness Things. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, boy.
Moving on to item twelve, is a request to promote. Vince Pazoli to the full position of fire inspector. So moved.
Court. Attorney. No, because it was my.
Mr. Dick, Mr. Tobacco.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members. I'm here to request a promotion in the fire department. H I recruited for the position of the fire inspector. This position was posted in compliance with the I A F F C B agreement. There are five applicants for this position. Election Committee has selected Vince Pazuli. Vince is currently a full-time firefighter with Macomb Township for four-plus years. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. To approve this promotion will go into effect immediately, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
This is a budgeted position.
Mr. Tobacco. Any questions or discuss? None. We have a motion by trustee Lucido, supported by trustee Cusmano, called Vince Pazuli to fire inspector. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. And to item thirteen, is a request to hire Jason Lapari as the I T manager. Motion.
So moved.
Tobacco.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members. I'm here requesting authorization to extend our offered employment to Jason Lapari for the I T Andrew position. This position was posted in compliance with the Ask Me C B agreement. H I received several resumes for this position and interviewed three applicants. The interview team consisted of supervisor deputy Jody Claycomb, I T consultant Alan McCarrick, and myself. We are requesting to hire Jason Lapari to the position of I T manager. If approved, it's contingent upon successful completion of all post offer requirements. And we're looking of a hire date for August twenty-ninth. Again, a budgeted position. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tobacco. And we have a motion by trustee Lucido, supported by trustee Nevers. Hire Jason Lapari into the I T manager position. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. And to the next item, this is our add-on, item thirteen A. Um, is there a motion to promote Ed Carey to the position of election supervisor?
So moved. Support.
Tobacco.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members. I'm here to request a promotion in the clerk's office due to a recent resignation. Employee was serving the role as like election supervisor. And H I is recommending Ed Carey for this position. Ed is currently an elections coordinator and was hired within the township on October twentieth, twenty twenty. Ed was originally one of our three candidates who we interviewed back in April. Again, thank you for your consideration of the matter. This is a budgeted position, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tobacco. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Lucido. To approve the promotion of Ed Carey to election supervisor. Members, please vote.
This will be a voice vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on. Thank you, Jeff. Moving on to item fourteen, we have a request to, for the, uh, excuse me. Item fourteen, a request for authorization to begin design work and bid documents for the concrete replacement at fire station number two. There are motion.
So moved. Court.
Chief.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, the current budget, fire improvement budget included, uh, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the replacement. Uh, the current budget, fire improvement budget included six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of concrete at fire station two. Uh, the concrete was originally poured in late nineteen eighty eight when the station, uh, was built. The concrete has deteriorated over the years and is in, in need of replacement. At this time, I'm requesting your approval to work with engineering and facility and grounds to proceed with the design and the design work and development of the bid documents. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
One, quick, yep. So are we going to start at the road and just all the way around all the concrete or?
I, it would, the initial conversation we've said, it would be done in either two or three phases where we would start, uh, the front of the building. Uh, and then work from the back and then to the side. So we allow the trucks to still be able to get in and out through the whole process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucido, authorize uh, the beginning of design work and bid documents for the concrete replacement at fire station number two, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a request to accept hazard mitigation grant program award in the amount of fifty thousand four hundred dollars. Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As the emergency management liaison for the township, I submitted a grant application in February of twenty twenty one on behalf of the Department of Public Works for funding for a backup generator of pump station number eight, uh, in the amount of fifty six thousand dollars. The application required a twenty five percent local match if awarded. Uh, pump station number eight was identified in our twenty eighteen hazard mitigation plan is, uh, lacking in need of a backup generator. As a result of the flooding that occurred in the Midland area in June of twenty twenty, FEMA authorized grant funds for municipalities in need of backup generators of high priority infrastructure sites. Pump station number eight met the criteria, as it had previously been identified as a high priority site. January of twenty twenty one, I spoke with Supervisor Viviano and Mr. Wanglin and informed them of the grant opportunity. Supervisor Viviano indicated there had been discussions regarding the need for the backup generator and the, uh, at that location and authorized me to submit the application on behalf of the township. I worked with engineering and D P W to get the necessary information and submitted the application in February twenty twenty one. I received notice, uh, on July eighteenth of twenty twenty two, the township was officially awarded the grant in the amount of fifty thousand four hundred dollars and the twenty five percent match requirement had been reduced to ten percent. So therefore, I'm requesting your approval to accept the grant in the amount of fifty thousand four hundred dollars for the installation of a backup generator at pump station number eight. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, we have a motion by Trustee Lucido, supported by Clerk Posey, the mitigation grant poured in the amount of fifty thousand hundred dollars, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Chief. Moving on to item sixteen is a request to approve purchase of replacement backup batteries for the D S two hundred ballot tabulators from Elections Systems and Software in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred and ninety six dollars and fifty nine cents. Is there a motion?
So moves. Trustee Kuzma supports.
Clerk Posey?
Uh, members of the board, our D S two hundred ballot tabulators have a backup battery to power the tabulator during a power outage. The current batteries are at the end of their five-year life per Elections Systems and Software guidance. The batteries will be installed at no cost by an E N, E S N S technician. Um, so I'm requesting approval for the purchase of the backup batteries, uh, per the guidance of our Elections System software. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or discussion?
Question, what they do with all the old, are they taking the old batteries?
They take them back. Just those of them.
Good.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I got a couple of questions. Are battery backups required?
Yes.
By state law or regulation?
State law and our, uh, Elections System software for that. Like the tabulators for us.
Tabulator with this battery backup, I mean, all the legal requirements, specifications is required by the Secretary of State?
Yes.
And are the D S two hundred ballot tabulators manufactured by Dominion?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have no other questions.
Thank you, Trustee Kuzma. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Trustee Nevers, supported by Trustee Kuzmano, to approve the purchase of replacement backup batteries for the D S two hundred ballot tabulators. So. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the next item. Item seventeen is a request to appoint Mr. James Veal Junior to the McComb, to the Clinton McComb Public Library Board. Your motion?
So moved, support.
Um. A few months back, Mr. Latito, who was the previous, um, member of the community serving in this role, uh, resigned his position on the library board. Uh, we put the call out for applicants, we received a number of very well-qualified applicants. Um, I sat with Mr. Veal, got to know him a little bit. Uh, um, he also sat and talked to members of the library board and the library director, Mr. Veal. Um, all of us agreed that Mr. Veal would be an excellent fit on the library board. He brings eighteen years of professional experience, um, with him. He, in talking to him, uh, I was confident that he both recognizes and, and is willing to serve as our representatives to the library board, both understanding the fiduciary responsibility and the fact that we want our library to be an asset, not only now, but in the years to come. So very excited that Mr. Veal is willing to serve us. And with that, I will take any questions from the board. Hearing none, and a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucido, appoint Mr. James Veal Junior, Junior to the Clinton McComb Public Library Board. Please vote. Passes unanimously. Well, I should have noted that this will be for the remainder of Mr. uh, Latito's term and expires in April thirtieth. Okay, I agree. Congratulations, Mr. Veal. Moving on to the next item, is a request to adopt and publish an amended animal control ordinance. This would be from the McComb Township Ordinances, Chapter Four, Article Two. That by repealing and replacing section four sixteen in its entirety. Is there a motion?
Trustee Kuzma makes the motion.
Second.
Um, so this was brought to us, uh, actually by way of the, um, Chief of Animal Control of the county. He has been requesting Combs Township adopt the draft ordinance that he had prepared for some time. Uh, myself, um, Treasurer Gillette and Council, we did it. We made some free, small amendments to it. And instead of adopting it in its entirety, we, we adopt the portions that we thought were most relevant or suggesting adopting the portions that are most relevant to the Combs Township. Um, and the ordinance is in the packet, so with that, I will accept any questions from the board. Discussion? Hearing none, um, motion by, welcome by Trustee Kuzmano, right?
Yes.
Supported by Clerk Posey. To adopt and publish the amended animal control ordinance by repealing and replacing section four sixteen in its entirety, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item nineteen is a request to amend the hours of operation for equipment and construction. Uh, this is from McComb Township Code Ordinance, it's chapter eleven, article three, section eleven dash forty one. Is there a motion?
Trustee Kuzma will make the motion.
For a second?
Support.
So this is a follow-up to, um, what we did two weeks ago, uh, when we granted a waiver, uh, for Misswood Development. Uh, in talking to Mr. Van Tifflin and the rest of our staff, this is, that waiver was a regular occurrence that the construction of roads specifically necessitates longer workdays in order for them to be constructed properly. Um, so it was, uh, suggested that we change this, um, ordinance for road construction to go from six A M to ten P M. I recognize that it's an inconvenience. It is a long-term benefit to the township and to the residents who are going to be living on that road because we've been going through uh, with our road reconstruction program, replacing the roads is extremely expensive and if they fall apart prematurely, um, that's a town, township and the residents are going to have to absorb. So it's in all of our best interest that the roads are built to the highest standards, um, that we can allow for. Also on this, as part of this amendment, is changing the standard construction and noise from, uh, so to seven A M to seven P M. And that's simply an adjustment, then puts us more in line with our neighbors who all, um, Shelby, Chesterfield and Plutton Township all started seven A M with their, uh, noise restrictions. With that, I will take any questions from the board. Yes, Mr. Lucido.
One question, um, I, I have had a couple of conversations with some residents. I guess if Mr. Van Tifflin could kind of give us some idea of how I guess some of these contractors are, are they shortening the amount of time that they might be on these job sites by working longer hours throughout the day or is it more of the material thing? Not so much for the roads, I understand the roads completely, but some of the residents were saying, you know, seven A M is too early and seven P M is too late for their, you know, kids getting to school and things of that nature. Can you speak to any of that?
Yeah, I, you know, it, it, like I've, I've said, when the Myers thing came up in, in the last one from Misswood, this road, uh, work in the saw cutting is very weather dependent. You know, the weather changes throughout the day. It's hard for the contractor to predict when the saw cutting can be done. And the county won't let them start saw cutting until that pavement is ready. And then there's a window that they need to get this done and if they don't get it done, then all that pavement needs to be removed. And again, it's hard to predict in the morning, you know, when they have to stop in order to meet, you know, a, a, a six o'clock deadline, which is where we're at right now. So, yeah, the supervisor is correct, we have had this problem in, eh, eh, most of our subdivisions when they're being built, especially in the middle of the summer. When it's hot, you know, wind, uh, humidity all has a, a, an effect on, on the cure time for the roads. Uh, and obviously we want, you know, quality roads and, you know, having construction joints, you know, by having shorter pores is not, not the solution. We want to be, you know, fair to the residents, but also get them in and out as quickly as possible, which is, I think, I think your point. Um, you know, but also have, you know, the ability to go into those extended hours, uh, in order to ensure that they've got the saw cuts done before, uh, you know, the concrete cures to a, a point where they, they can't do it anymore.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lucido. Any other discussion or comment? Hearing none, we have a motion by Trustee Kuzmano, supported by Trustee Oliver, to amend the hours of operation for equipment and construction. Would be for section, um, sorry, for chapter eleven, article three, section eleven dash forty one, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item twenty is a request to approve a temporary encroachment agreement for four six six five five Peach Grove and four six six seven seven Peach Grove. Is there a mo- motion? Okay. One. Okay. So, item fails, like. Moving on to public comments. For non-agenda items, this would be for, um, three minutes, anyone who wishes to make comment on non-agenda items, your opportunity. One present? Anyone on digitally, raise your hand? All right. Moving on, moving on to board comments.
Trustee Lucido. Uh, just a couple, going down here. Uh, just congratulate Mr. Carey, I hope I'm saying the names correct, uh, after, Mr. Pizzoli, Mr. Lapari, Mr. Veal uh, on your new positions that we, uh, voted on this evening. And also want to thank the chief for procuring, uh, the grant for the generator. Uh, thanks everybody for the hard work and also Mr. Van Tifflin and anybody else that was part of redoing the D T E, uh, a special assessment districts and saving the township money over a long period of time. That's always something I'm, uh, in favor of, so thank you very much for all your hard work on that, that's it.
And I would like to congratulate everybody in the collective. I didn't have all the names written down, but congratulations and especially Ed Carey as well, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Nevers, Trustee Oliver. Same thing, Mr. Pizzoli, uh, Ed Carey, Mr. Veal, you're here tonight, thank you, uh, for stepping up, we're always looking for people to be on these boards, so we appreciate that. Um, thank the clerk for having a very successful election. I'm sure she's got some comments on it, so I'm not contesting nothing away from her. And that's about it. Thank you, Trustee Oliver, Trustee Kuzmano.
No comments tonight, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Clerk Posey?
Um, I'd like to congratulate everyone on their positions this evening, um, welcome to, welcome aboard or, and congratulate you on your promotions. Um, most of all, I want to talk about the most recent election. I want to take the time to personally thank every township employee and election worker for your contributions to the successful administration of the August state primary election. The incredible amount of time, resources and work on your part over many weeks and even many months cannot be overstated. I know it was a long and stressful day for many of you, but your work resulted in truly accomplished day for Michigan's democracy. Over two million voters across the state of Michigan cast a ballot and you helped ensure their votes were safely and securely counted. McComb Township had a twenty one percent turnout on Tuesday, August second with nineteen thousand four hundred and eighteen voters, of which sixty one presented, uh, sixty one percent voted by absentee ballot. To my staff in the Clerk's Department, my personal thanks to you for your commen- continued commitment to McComb Township elections. Together we execute the Super Bowl on Election Day and I am grateful to each and every one of you for all the work that you do. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. Um, I want to add to my congratulations to our, uh, all of the employees that were promoted today. Um, and to Mr. Lapari for his new position. Feel like we got stronger today, congratulations to Mr. Veal. We're glad to have you as part of our, uh, representative on the McComb, on the Clinton McComb Library Board. So that's great, that board's filled out. Uh, I want to thank all of the voters in McComb Township for passing the Parks and Rec Millage. Uh, that will help us stabilize our funding for the future. Uh, we have a lot of great things planned for our park system and we're looking forward to bringing you even better and better things. And that, that is all the comments I have. This time, I would like, I'm, I'm requesting a motion to go into closed session to consult with legal counsel regarding trial strategy in connection with case number, uh, actually it's cases number twenty one dash C V dash one zero five seven zero and two zero two zero dash zero zero one four, one four three two dash C D per M C L fifteen point two six eight one E.
Trustee Kuzma makes the motion, support.
And discussing on the motion. Hearing none, motion by Trustee Kuzmano, supported by Lucido. Closed session per M C L fifteen point two six eight one E, Clerk Posey, recall the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Trustee Kuzmano.
Yes.
Trustee Lucido. The Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Supervisor Viviano.
Yes.
Motion is. And we are going into closed session. And we are going into closed session. The time is nineteen. That someone's always. So Mister Veal. Sorry, I'll have to have you come by the office to get sworn in. We'll contact you on Monday. Okay?
You know, you know how you plug it in, it's, I don't know, connected there, I didn't realize it. Whatever. You know, all those people are really smart in that moment. You know, open there. The saw watch after this, after they're the saws on the study. All right, guys, have a good night.
See you on Tuesday. Are returning from closed session. The time is seven fifty-three PM. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn? So, members. Looking by Trustee Lucido, supported by Trustee Nevers to adjourn the meeting. Members, please vote. Guys, even chase Carl out of here. Shocked. unanimously, this meeting is adjourned.